601.
Hmm?
It's 601.
You start the meeting.
Oh, I do? Oh, that's right, because you're not the chair yet. Okay, so I'll call the meeting to order if we want to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is civilized in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice in its heart.
So the first item on the agenda is to reorganize the board. I'll entertain a nomination for Chair.
I nominate Arnie Janinas for Chair.
I second it.
Okay, so Lee Gustafson is the nomination, Jeff Holden is the second. Any other nominations? Being no other nominations, we'll vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Take it away, Arnie.
Thanks for your confidence and thank you for your service in that role. Appreciate it. My job on the board here. It helps when the front office and Julie and everybody there does most of the work, so it kind of makes it a little easier for myself and the board to do what we have to do, which is I'm very thankful for the help that we get from the front office.
You are very welcome.
Our next item would be to seek nominations for a Vice Chair.
I'll nominate Heather Chase.
I'll second it.
Are there any other nominat-- oh, so Heather, you accept a nomination?
Yes, I do.
Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Hearing none, we'll vote on Heather being Vice Chair. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Heather, you got your job back for another year.
Thank you very much, everyone, and I ditto what Arnie says about everyone in the office, and I also think, Arnie, thank you so much for all the work you put in because you make it, you know, easy for me, too. So, thank you.
Thanks, Heather. Do we do the clerk now, too, don't we?
We do.
So I would accept nominations for clerk.
I nominate Lee Gustafson.
Second.
So Jeff Holden has nominated Lee Gustafson, and Lee Dakin has seconded. Any other nominations? All those in favor of Lee Gustafson as clerk, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Lee, you're back to being our clerk again. Appreciate that. That's it for now, for-- I mean, usually in the future meetings, we'll have a list of all the other appointments that we have as far as shingles and wares.
Your next, your next meeting on the 17th.
Yep. And I believe at that next meeting, we'll also be making some appointments to the Development Review Board and the Planning Commission also, so we'll finish filling out all the appointments then. Next item on our agenda is approve our minutes from our February 17 meeting.
I make motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
I did just find one typo, and that was just in the old business part of the date that we went to the Public Safety Building, and I don't think it was February 148, I think it was February 18. That'd be the only tiny little typo I saw.
It's February 18, not February 148.
Correct.
But we were there.
Yeah, we were. It was a great experience.
It was.
It's a short one.
I have an insertion I'd like to have made.
Go ahead.
Bottom of second page, where it says Jeff Holden asked if the changes are based on an actual state statute, and I'd like to have the state statute inserted after that, which would be Title 23-- correction, Title 24, VSA 4302, so if anybody wants to reference that, they know what they need to look up.
What was that number?
Good idea.
Title 24, VSA 4302.
Yes.
Yes. Any other changes or corrections, omissions, errors in the minutes?
On that same page, under the paragraph that starts with Tim Roper, the question mark after Brandy is Saxton, S-A-X-T-O-N.
Ah, okay.
Oh, the Brandy question mark?
Yep.
Okay. And anything else from anyone? Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes with the changes and corrections mentioned, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Let's start with the minutes. Our next item on our agenda is citizens' comments. If there was someone here that would like to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. Are there any citizens' comments, either here in person or on our virtual world on Hearing no citizens' comments, nothing from previous meetings. Julie?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. And on to number four, old business. Take us to our old business list.
So the Public Safety Building, of course, is at the top of, always the top of the radar. Contingency holding right now at this point at about 70,000. Police, fire, and ambulance are kind of walking through pretty much weekly at this point, going over, making an appointment with the foreman over there, adding, just kind of getting their eyes as detail is really starting to take shape inside. Just make sure everything is, you know, the outlets are going where they want them to be and that kind of stuff. I have a site visit on Friday. I will be going over and confirming carpet, floor color, you know, all the stuff that the architect has picked out, department has looked at, but that'll all be happening on Friday.
What time next Friday?
That's happening this Friday at 11:00.
Oh, this Friday at 11:00?
This Friday, 11:00. Yeah, I have an annual, I mean, I have a weekly meeting with the architect and the project, the contractor, but this week it's, I'll be at the building. So the gravel project, not a whole lot new. Jim Goss has reached out to Act 250. They've indicated that they're working on it, and what we've been told is hopefully we'll have it very soon.
Julie?
Yes?
Sorry, I couldn't find the mute button fast enough. On the Public Safety Building, when you said 70,000 contingency, what was the contingency total?
The contingency that we started with was like 88.5.
About 90, yeah.
It was a little over 90.
So we have 70 left?
A little over 70 left, yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah, yeah, we're in a good position.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Town Hall, as you can see, the acoustic panels have been installed, there's a little more work to be done, a few panels to be replaced at the end, and we're adding a few more for aesthetics, and then they'll be trimming them out, so those will be done hopefully in the next couple of weeks, and that piece will be finished. The Historical Society, as you can see, has donated, and Wright Construction came and hang, hung the artwork that was lent to us to use on display. Ron is going to be selecting a few more pieces now that these are up, and he sees how much wall space there really is left. We don't want to overdo it, but just a few more pieces here and there, so just want to thank them. It really adds some character to the space, which is really nice.
So Julie, is the piece that's sitting at your right shoulder behind you, yeah, is that part of that from the Historical Society as well? No, no, no. Is that a heating duct? What is that?
This?
Very ornate. No, no, no. Just over to your right, behind you.
On the Wayne's Coat, yeah.
Oh, the black thing right there?
Yeah.
That is the ductwork.
Oh, nice.
It's an old register.
Those are the old registers. They're all along the building, all along the walls. There's several of them, and we just, when they painted, they highlighted them by accenting them in black, so that--
Oh, I love it. It looks great.
Yeah, those stay. Those are not historic. Well, they're historic, but they're not--
They're functional as well.
Yesterday, when I was there, I just think it looks fantastic, and Ron Patch and the Historical Society, I thought, did a really great job so far, so.
Yeah, it's really nice of them to lend these items to us, to have them displayed for the townspeople to see, because they really add some character to this room. They're really sweet.
Agreed. Yep, agreed. And that's it for me for old business, for this meeting.
Anybody else have any old business items? Okay. Next item on our agenda is Yosemite Firehouse update and proposal for some next steps. Lillian Willis is here to help us along with this, give us an update and a presentation basically to inform us on where we are and what you see as far as going forward with this, Lillian.
Right, did you want to--
Sure, I can give the precursor. So Lillian has been working with me relatively regularly over the past couple of years on kind of steps along the way as we're working on the Yosemite Firehouse. We have worked a fair amount with Jeff Metcalf from Keefe and Westner Architects on everything that we've been doing, but what we're feeling right now is before we do a whole lot more, we would like to have some final drawings from the architect. We have prelims, we have ideas, but nothing that is final. As I am applying for grant funding, as Lillian is going to be at some point starting fundraising and capital campaign efforts, the final architectural drawings and civil engineering drawings, all of that piece, we're finding is the missing piece. Those are what solidify that we have a project, and now we can start checking things off the list and getting them done. So I had budgeted in the revitalization category 20,000 for, to either do windows or some painting over there. What we'd like to do this year is take a step back, and the cost from Jeff would be somewhere in the 15 range. We'd like to use 15,000 of that to go ahead and proceed with getting our final drawings that we need, and I believe that those drawings will help us when we go to apply for funding for the windows and the doors and those next steps. So I didn't feel comfortable making that decision on my own. This is more than just, you know, shoring up the building, so to speak, so I just wanted the board to weigh in, and Lillian can give a kind of a presentation, too, on what she's--
So I have a question before you stand up, Lillian, sorry. Is that $15,000, is that final construction drawings, or is that just proof of concept?
No, we're asking for final construction drawings, so that from here, we can start going at it as money allows and funding allows.
So that would be all we would need to spend in order to move ahead with the--
From what Jeff has told me, yes, from, yes, that's what I have asked him for.
Okay.
Final drawings, we can go to work.
Okay, great, thank you.
Lillian, you looked like that you weren't agreeing with that. Is that a correct thing?
Well, I don't know, I prefer your answer.
That's the answer I was given from the architect whom I am the one that spoke with, so, yep.
Okay, because--
Doesn't really matter if this works, does this work for everybody?
It works, yep.
It does work, yes.
So basically, everything is more complicated. Just to take a step back, I'm sure you've all read the timeline and information that I sent to you, but it was really brought to a head that we needed to take this step because the surveyor is trying to draw up the map so that we can have that land gift of the land for the parking given, and we can finalize all those legal steps. However, in checking with the architect, I said, does that mean that we can then go ahead with that? Have you meshed those plans with the next stage where you get up to the level that is by Yosemite, by the building, so that you make sure you've got the access and that the retaining wall that's necessary for there will all fit in? He said, oh, no, that was just, that was preliminary, in the sense that we talked to people from the state, and they didn't see any problem as far as storage and that kind of thing, but that's not your final approval for that land. And no, it hasn't been meshed. The next thing will require more engineering plans. And I said, how do we get there? Because you've got to mesh those things. I mean, we're not going to go to this donor and then change our minds later on. He said, no, you've got to have engineering plans for that. So we got into this discussion of how we can proceed, because we've basically done the things that we can do, like the roof, the pillars under the back, you know, the stabilization, taking those steps, but we can't get in there now on the sliding door, the side door is all iced in, and we simply can't take any more steps without getting final approval, both official, local, and state, so that we have to make sure we can get floodplain and, you know, the floodway approvals, et cetera. And when you bring in an engineer to do that, I said, if you bring in an engineer to do that, you should really take a look at the other side of the building, because the concrete blocks are beginning to deteriorate. And so the whole idea is if you get an engineer in, by George, have him look at both sides so that you're not going to waste your time and his time and more money down the line. So he said, this was the next step, to get these plans that would enable us to have a, be able to know more concretely what was needed and to get the approvals that we needed to proceed, because right now, for instance, if the town could even remove the old furnace, we can't get in there. And the whole idea is that you would get that next step, so you've got that terrace out the back, we've got an approval from the state, tentative approval for the door that we'd like to put in. So many things were agreed that I let you know in that email, which is such a major step, to have those approvals of the concept that we would like, but we've got to be able to get that, those approvals, so that we can take advantage of grants as they come up, even of funding as it comes up. Without those approvals, we really can't make further progress.
So the first step in that approval chain is the architectural plans?
He needs to do the thing for the whole, the whole thing, plans for the building. I mean, and he's not going to probably get into heat, the heating and the, you know, electrical, but he needs to be thinking about that and allow for that, like where sewer and water would come in, and also get those engineers that he says will be required, and you will not get formal state approval for that work without those engineers and their drawings.
These are all final plans. I spoke with Jeff, I'm the one that asked him for the cost.
Okay.
It's 15, around 15,000 will get us everything we need and ready for construction, is the words that were said to me. That's what I asked for.
Okay, if he's an architect, is anything planned on being changed, for example, window design or whatever?
Window design, no, but there is, interior layout does get changed in order to convert it to a museum. There is, I mean, it's not--
It's minimal.
Yeah, it's minimal.
It's truly minimal.
Yeah, yeah.
The interior, the interior, you're saying is minimal.
But because you have a historic building, and the only way to get grant funding for that building is through historic preservation grants, they require drawings from an architect that specializes in historic buildings.
So do you need a motion for this, or what's the--
I don't know that I need a motion, I'm just kind of running it by you, I just, I want consensus of the board before, I mean, the money is there, I'm changing the use of it, so I just want the general consensus of the board that they agree to go in this direction. I mean, I feel it's important, Lillian feels it's important, I really think it's the next step. This kind of seems to be the stumbling block, every time we go to do a next step, this is the hurdle, so let's just get it over and done with, and take that step back so that we can then go forward. That's what I'm asking for.
Yeah, well, I know in the past, we've found that if we don't do our preliminary legwork, then we're not available for grants when they are available.
Correct, and that's what we're finding.
So we've got to have, we've got to have the groundwork done.
Yeah. I'm in a-- This sounds like we're going to be able to move forward finally.
Yes, it would be, if you guys are okay with me spending the money this way, yes.
This is Heather, and I think it's great to get our ducts lined up so that we can start fundraising, and we, the collective we, and, you know, start planning. I think it's a great idea, and I think it's a wonderful next step.
So these plans are, once they come through, they provide us with a document to continue forward, and basically you don't see any changes on these, maybe minor something inside, but basically it covers everything that we have to worry about as far as the structure goes, the outside, the grounds, floodplain--
Correct, all of that is going to be worked through, yes, all of that is going to be worked through, so that the end product is the end product. We're not going back and changing it again. It's the end product. It's going to be a process.
We're not going to have to come back and revisit any of this, or say, oh, we missed this, or we have to do this now, or--
I hope not.
No, we are doing this.
But the fire marshal also has to approve the plans for the building.
But the final plan that we end up with will have already been through that process.
So that means solving the door problem--
Correct.
The sliding door that I alluded to in that report.
Correct.
So, you know, there may be a little tweaking, but in the end, we'll have that final plan and solve those problems.
I just want to reiterate that, once we do this, that this document is not going to have to change, or not going to have to spend more money, or do anything else regarding all these issues that we're talking about, and once that's in hand, and we have that, that's great, and we can go forward with it, but I've just seen documents sometimes on, from architects and engineers and stuff, that get put out there, and then next thing you know, well, something changes, and now it goes back, and you've got to redo it, and back and forth, and back and forth, but so long as this is very, like a comprehensive document that's going to cover all the bases, a little more--
Right, and as Julie said, we've got to have this groundwork done in order to have any chance of getting grants or anything like that.
And I have asked Jeff for the estimate to get us final plans that are final plans. And he threw out, it's going to be somewhere around 15, because he'll have to bring in some engineers and, you know, to get opinions and that kind of thing, but--
We had earmarked 20,000--
I had earmarked 20, yeah.
For Yosemite this year?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we definitely fall within that, that will be within that, and that even gives us a little bit of room in case something goes over, or--
It'd be nice if we could--
I really appreciate that, and Lillian, your memo to us was very helpful as well.
Thanks.
Every major step at this point requires outside professionals and official approvals.
Correct, it does.
Yeah, that's why I only promise the things that are under my control. So you ask, do I promise?
No.
No, I'm not going to promise, but that's my hope.
But I have been assured by the professionals.
Yeah.
It sounds like you've done your homework, and you realize what's happening and going on. So you don't need a motion, you don't need anything from us, just the--
I don't, because the money's there.
--consensus of the board, that that money, instead of going, I guess it was heading towards windows and painting possibly, but priorities--
We may have a little leftover to work on some of it.
Yes, that's my hope, yes.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
You know, every year, we've been doing a little something on it, it's not like we've forgotten about the building. We're shoring it up, we're fixing the doorway, we're doing what we can, and, you know, the town has a lot of historic buildings that we're trying to maintain and preserve, and this one's, this one's an important one.
Everybody sees them when they go through Chester's.
I mean, when it's finally done, with the ideas that you have in mind, and it's completed, it should be quite the, quite the attraction.
Yep.
I would think so.
Anybody else have any other comments, or questions, or concerns while Lillian is here?
No, just thank you for all your work, appreciate it. It was a very comprehensive memo you sent to us.
Yes, yes, it was, thank you.
Excellent. I have to say, it's a pleasure to see you all in person.
Yes.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Lillian.
We lost Sappa for a second.
We lost Sappa?
Can you hear us, Lee? Oh, we can't hear you.
If I unmute, I can hear you. I mean, tell you I can hear you.
We've had concern that we lost Sappa, and we're wondering if it, well, Sappa, you're on Zoom, though, so--
So they could, they're still hearing us, so that's helpful.
Oh, that's perfect.
I hear you, loud and clear.
Okay, good.
So Amy, it's Jeff Sappa right now, that we're--
They can hear us, so that's good.
I mean, there's nothing, nothing earth-shattering coming up, it's basically some housekeeping on liquor license approvals and stuff.
I had one question on that before we get into the liquor license approvals. I read through each one of them and understand it all, but I was confused when I saw continued on next page, and I couldn't find next pages for any of these things. Was this something that we needed to have?
No, the next page is the, is the signature page, is--
Okay. Thanks, Julie.
You're welcome.
Should I just go through them one at a time, Julie?
Sure, I'm going to hand them to you, yeah. You could approve them as a group. I will start by saying that, Rick, that we have no issues with any of these, from the police department perspective.
Usually, that's the only question we have with the, with the police chief, or any issues regarding with the town.
Yep.
And everything's clear, and everything's okay with it. So the first-class liquor license approvals are for the Heritage Deli and Bakery, McLomons LLC, American Legion Post 67, Jiffy Mart, oh, wait, that's second class, so just the first class of those three I just mentioned. Second-class liquor license approvals are Jiffy Mart and Sandries. Third class is American Legion Post 67, with outdoor consumption also. Third-class McLomons LLC with outdoor consumption. And Heritage is just outdoor consumption?
Heritage Deli is first class.
Hmm?
Heritage Deli is first class.
Oh, okay, 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 and the outdoor consumption.
And outdoor consumption, correct.
That's, the first class is something new for them, they hadn't--
Oh, Heritage has it?
No.
Okay. So these are the signatures that we need on these.
So what's the renewal or the training period, is that three years?
Four.
So some of these have a last enforcement seminar and a date?
That's, for the bartenders have to be recertified.
And is that a three-year?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's all regulated through the Department of Liquor Control there?
Right, because I noticed some of these have a 2019 date, so just--
Yep.
I mean, they're all within the three-year period at this point.
And Lee or Heather, I'll need one of you to come in to sign the American Legion ones, because Jeff won't be able to sign those.
I can come in tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff, you wear a lot of hats in town, man.
Yeah, it's getting worse.
It's getting worse. I feel like I'm in my accountant's place, just signing this stuff. Here you go.
Exactly. No, they just sign them.
We used to make motions on this. We used to go individually and make a motion for every single one, but it turned out...
You don't have to, no.
We don't have to.
I would just always write in the minutes that the board signed, and then list them, Amy. I would just always make a note, you know, the board signed the first-class liquor licenses for, list them. Second-class liquor licenses for, and then list them. That's all you really need to do.
For the entertainment, oh, you still have those, okay.
Can I get these, and I'm all done signing?
I do. I can get them after, but hang on, I'm...
Either going to bend my head or my glasses. I need the glasses. What do I do with my mask?
They're all set with those, Lee?
I can get them after if you want.
Okay.
Up to you.
All right, the next item on our agenda are entertainment permits, basically the same thing that we've gone through with the liquor license and stuff. Everything's all set with them, they're pretty much standard, the same days that they've been granted before, it's changed as far as requested times or dates or anything.
Correct.
And the entertainment permits are for the American Legion, the Post 67, and McLomons. So I'll send these down the line.
Signatures on the back.
Yep.
I will say that American Legion is going to attempt to open up again this Sunday. We've been down seven months, struggling through, trying, you know, and our rainy day fund's pretty well depleted. We were fortunate, the bank allowed us to, you know, not pay our mortgage for this period of time, but still, you have a lot of power bills and every, all the other stuff that go along, heating and all that. And we're doing it per the governor's rules, so it's also just, we're lucky we have a big hall.
Plenty of room.
Yep, tables, and you will have to purchase food to, I mean, to come in. It's under the restaurant.
I was surprised at, in the beginning, that you had different rules than restaurants did, which, which made no sense at all. I mean, basically, the entertainment part of it, and, you know, the liquor part of it and stuff, is just like a restaurant would be, yet the regulations were a lot more stringent.
Yeah.
So that part of it never made sense to me at all, why, why they would be more stringent on a facility like yourselves as opposed to a regular restaurant. That, I'm glad that's changed, and it's bedding back to normal, or semi-normal or whatever. So we're all set with those signatures on that?
Yes, yep.
Next item on the agenda is items for future agendas and new business on our select board memo. We'll have the annual appointments to include the Planning Commission and the Development Review Board, our paper of record, and nothing's changed as far as electronic papers still?
I have received nothing that's different from statute, but I, but I do know other towns have gone with only online.
Only online?
Mm-hmm, they have, but, or only digital, I should say, but before the 17th, I'll see if there's an update from Jim, but...
Usually, that would have to be a legislative thing.
That's his opinion, that is his opinion, correct.
And People's Bank?
People's Bank will be here to give you an update on the funds, yep.
And the Palmer Bridge discussion regarding the three bridges altogether, or is it just going to be Palmer?
So they had reached back out, and you had agreed to let them come back and re-present. They're now working on the engineering and the design of that project as a whole, and so the engineer is asking to come back and re-present. I think they are really trying to get all three bridges to one, and the board had voted to leave Palmer Bridge and just combine two. They are now wanting to re-present that, so they will be back here to have that discussion with you on the 17th.
And Town Manager Review. It's been a year, Julie, and it's been quite a year.
It's been a year. It has been quite a year. Yes, yes.
Does anybody have any other items or new business or future agenda items they would like to see? Heather or Lee, anything? No?
No, this sounds good.
I think it covers it. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda would be to go into executive session for the purpose of interviewing for the Planning Commission and the DRB positions. We're going to finish up the interviews today, but we will not be taking any action when we come out. That will be for our next meeting, to make those appointments. So I don't anticipate anything at the end of all this, and then after that, we'll be going straight into a second executive session for our annual Town Manager Review.
Right.
So entertain a motion to go into executive session for the interviews with the Planning Commission and the DRB.
I move we go into executive session.
I second it.
Commission and DRB.
Lee's the motion, and Heather's the second. Any further discussion on it? All those in favor of going to, into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
So those that are on Zoom that are waiting for your interview, we're going to put you in the waiting room, and then when, they're ahead, the select board is ahead of schedule, so you probably will get your interview sooner. So just hang tight when we put you in the waiting room.